This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:05 PM Tuesday, July 19, 2022 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges that this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/IST535 where the livestream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex officio member who will be attending remotely, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Amundson?
Here.
Director Amundson?
Here.
Thank you. Clerk Barlow?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin?
Here.
Chair Marvin?
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Here.
And Director Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country. It is essential that letters do justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. To approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the agenda is approved. 3.0, focus topic. This evening, there are three areas of study that we'll be examining. The first is 3.01, 2021-22 Academic and Discipline Data Summary. Dr. Pikel.
Thank you, Dr. Marvin. And if I can just be sure that all of you can hear me with anybody giving a thumbs up, thank you. All right, so much. So, as board members are aware, I tested positive at the end of last week for COVID. I had hoped I would make it through this pandemic without experiencing it, but I'm not, so I'm on my last day in our required five-day isolation period, and so I apologize for not being there, but thanks for making a space for me to at least kick these three subjects off. And by the way, I'm doing fine and looking forward to being back and masked and joining you. As board members are aware, the commitment of this school board and of the district to transparency and data and sharing is a very, very strong one, and in fact, it's such a strong one that today and tonight, it actually got the best of us and we got a little ahead of ourselves. We included in the material for tonight some data from our state Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments about a month and a half earlier than we should have because those are embargoed by the state, so we've pulled those back. We will be very eager to share those with the board and the community. It was aggregate data, not the school-level data, but that is the result of the shift. I think when you have a superintendent who is isolated in quarantine and a very talented research director who's brand-new to K-12 coming from higher education, those things happen, and so with apologies for that. But I do think that is, I'm not just making excuses, I think it actually exemplifies the commitment that we have to data-driven decision-making and transparency, and that is exemplified by the level of data that you are seeing in the discipline reports here. We are reporting data by the school level, by the type of action that was recorded in our system that led to a disciplinary response, and then by the type of response. Board members reviewed aggregate data a couple of months ago around discipline, and now we are sharing with you detailed data at the school level and at the subgroup level. So, a really important next step in our work. Peter's also going to share with you, I think, another hallmark at the end of his presentation, and it's going to be relatively brief tonight, but I think it exemplifies where we want to go, as he's done some deeper analysis to merge the discipline data with data from our Panorama Survey. And what that begins to do is take us out of the realm of just sort of diagnosing the problem to beginning to think about causes and solutions. And so you'll begin to see what some of the students who have been impacted by our disciplinary procedures tell us about how they feel about being in our schools. And as board members and staff are aware, those are not necessarily causal, but they're very correlational, they're very strong associations, and they may suggest levers that we can push to address the issues that you're going to be talking about tonight. We're also going to be talking about ACT data, and that data is very important data, both for our individual students who are wanting to move on to college or some kind of post-secondary education. It also is, as more and more high school students are choosing not to take our state tests with their parents' approval, our best measure of academic readiness in terms of a standardized measure besides grades at the end of high school. So, very important ACT data and discipline data and some, I think, very intriguing early data in looking at factors and causes underneath that discipline data. I want to thank board members, and Peter and I got some emails over the weekend from community members who waded through 100-plus-page PDF document. I want to share with you and everybody listening that in a number of months, we will move beyond static PDF documents to dynamic dashboards that are available at the district and school levels that will allow us to not only report this data accurately and in real time, but that will allow our school leaders, our teachers, others with authorized access to drill down through that data. The system that the board, software platform that the board approved, the purchase of, in June will begin implementation early in the fall. And so while this data report represents, I think, a good step forward for us in the volume of data and the level of data that we're sharing, it's not where we want to stay, and it's part of a journey to really infuse everything that we do with data and evidence. The final point that I think I would make is that I would urge all of us, as Peter walks us through a brief summary of the data, and then as Jackie gives us a reminder, Jackie Peterson, our Chief of Schools, gives us a reminder of some of the initial things we're doing to address those data, that we see this as baseline data for the strategic plan that the board approved in June, that this is the beginning, and that we will be working very hard and expecting to see the strategies that you approved in June shifting the picture, both in terms of academic outcomes and in terms of these discipline and student perception data sets that Peter is going to describe for us now. So, this is the beginning of a journey, an important next step. I want to thank Peter for the work that he did to get us to this point amidst a lot of other different priorities, including leading implementation of that software platform that I just mentioned is going to be a powerful addition to our toolkit over the next couple of months. So, Peter Ruck, turn it over to you to give the board and others a general walkthrough, and then if Chair Marvin would agree, I would suggest that we turn to Jackie Peterson for a very brief reminder of what we're doing to address those data before we then open it for questions and comments.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. So, thanks for your patience with us as we kind of realized that embargo error with the MCA data that we made. So, we will release those later in August and come back to this topic at a, that'll be, this is not my voice now, all right, at a later date. So, this evening, we will discuss briefly our ACT data and our discipline data from the last academic year, and then a little bit of trend information as well. All of the details that are contained in this presentation, as well as a lot more information, is available in the PDF that's part of the board agenda. When it included the MCA data, it clocked in, I believe, 143 pages. It's shorter now because we took out the MCA pages, so it makes for good reading.
Can we get the other screens on, pass them here, so we can see what's back? Oh, okay, as long as, got it.
All right. So, our ACT results, only a couple slides on this that summarize our district-wide trend over the last four years. All of our high school students have the opportunity to take the ACT, and it is currently our primary assessment for college readiness in our region. And when I say region, I mean the Midwest. That's what most colleges and universities within our geographic area use as their entrance assessment. And even community colleges will accept ACT results in lieu of placement for their entering students. The ACT was originally designed to predict first-year college grades. It actually does that reasonably well, but its utility in college admissions has been on the decline. I'm sure all of you have read in the news that both SAT and ACT are being required less and less, or even if they are still required, they're being given less weight within the admissions process. All right, so a bar graph on the screens now is showing you our ACT results by the domain over time. So, 2018, 2019 is our last full pre-pandemic year, and then our last year, 2122, is also shown. Essentially, what you'll see is there is very little movement. The scores essentially vary around a central mean. There's no real trend up or down. To put this in context of statewide and national results, our results, it depends on the domain, but they are somewhere between the 52nd and 56th percentile, I believe, in the state, so we're slightly above the state average, just slightly. Nationally, it's at about the 60th percentile. Minnesota is one of the top-scoring states on the ACT in general, so that's not necessarily When you break down our ACT results by race and ethnicity, you'll notice that there are some rather substantial gaps between student groups. One demographic note that I want to make, we only had three students that fell into the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander category, so we did include them with Asian students just so that they weren't such a small group by themselves. What you can see on the chart shows that some of our demographic groups are scoring even a third to 40% lower than others. You will see these same trends if you look at our MCA data from prior years, if you look at our ACT data from prior years. These disparities are stubborn and roughly consistent over time. So, moving on to discipline, so there are a couple of terms in the larger report and then in the slides here that I want to make sure I walk through. The first one is infractions, which is the incident itself. The reason I mention that is the database actually calls it offenses. So, you will see in the PDF document the term offenses, I prefer the term infractions. They are one and the same in terms of the data themselves. Same thing with consequence, response, or action after the fact. We often think of it as a consequence or a response, the database calls that an action. So, when you see those two terms reflected within the written report, that's where they are coming from. Overall, our disciplinary infractions are slightly down since the beginning of the pandemic. However, if you look at the school-by-school and specific infractions themselves, the overall total obscures a fair amount of useful detail that can be gleaned when you start looking at a smaller unit of analysis like a school building. So, the longer report that's contained online will give you a lot of those important details. I'll go over a few of the district-wide trends right now. So, this is infractions categorized into a few categories, categorized into categories, I'll go with it, broken down by race and ethnicity. This is with our last academic year. As you can see, oops, as I lose my own place in my slides, as you can see, essentially across the board, there are disproportionate impact among different race and ethnic groups. Now, we have talked about in previous board meetings what disproportionate impact is, however, I never want to assume that we are all comfortable with that term, it's a little jargon-y. So, disproportionate impact at its heart simply means that if there was no impact, you would expect to see the demographics of the district match the demographics of students who are getting into trouble, or students who are achieving really high on a test, or, you know, whatever the outcome is. And when the two demographic breakdowns don't match, that's when you have disproportionate impact. If we look at the responses after the incident, the consequence after the fact, same thing. The only thing I want to note in this bar chart, there's one that looks a little out of whack, and that's our no-action column. That is only 70, Chris, do you remember, we just looked at this, like 76 out of 4,000 or something? It's a pretty small number. So, that one, it does look a little bit out of whack, but the actual number is pretty small. If we're looking at infractions by gender identity, you will see that males are far more likely to commit any of the infractions that the district tracks. We had discussed that previously as well. You will see the same trend in the actions taken after the infraction. With English learners, as you may recall from some of our previous discussions of student outcomes data, especially with our most recent data from the Panorama Survey, our English learners are one of our groups that tends to be the most impacted on any variety of these outcomes, and that is also the case here. Our English learners are significantly overrepresented in the infractions, and as a result, also in the responses after the fact. The last group is discipline, infractions, and consequences by the type of educational service received, whether it's general education services or special education services. Given that our overall district proportion of special education is roughly 16%, I believe, you can see that they're overrepresented in almost every single offense category that we track, given their relative proportion within the population. Types of responses as well. Interestingly, I do think it's notable here that some of the differences that you see between consultations and removals, like ISS and admin removal. School level, this one came up a lot with, well, in any number of venues. This is our infractions by type broken down by the level of school that they occurred. And as you can see, it's our middle schools, our biggest chunk on, almost all of them, with the exception of academic dishonesty, which is evenly spread across all levels, and weapons, which was more likely in high school. So, looking under the numbers, this is the part where people like me start to get a little excited. So, everything we've done so far has been descriptive. Frequencies and descriptive are very important, they're very valuable, they give you a very good snapshot of where you are today. What they don't give you the best information on is what the relationship between those concepts might be, or what the causal mechanism itself might be as well. So, before today, I was able to use our Panorama data and test it against our discipline data. What I set out to try to do was to use Panorama items to predict a later disciplinary infraction. The models included a variety of different types, a variety of different Panorama items, and then I accounted for what you can see on the list there. So, we included grade, gender, race, ethnicity, English learner status, and so forth. What that means is, when you plug all this into the computer and tell it to do its wizardry, it separates out the effect of each of those items so that you're getting us an estimate of the effect of just the one thing you're looking at, which in this case for us was the Panorama item. So, finding summarized, that looks like the arrows, so there are supposed to be down arrows instead of blocks, but we'll go with blocks. All right, so what we're looking at here, on the left-hand column is the Panorama item, the concept, and then what I was able to use is a procedure called a binary logistic regression, and what that does is it gives you the effect of any given item on the odds of the outcome. So, for example, if I have a high sense of belonging, net of all those other factors that we just listed, what are the effects of having a high sense of belonging on my odds of getting a disciplinary infraction? Everyone with me? Okay. So, the effects on the odds of a disciplinary infraction for grades three to five, a high sense of belonging is associated with a 75% reduction in the odds of a disciplinary infraction. Others understanding me, 60%. Comfortable asking for help, 66. The effects are even larger when you get to the grades six through 12 in our secondary schools, when you add in a couple of additional concepts, like my teachers frequently encourage me to do the best. And if I arrived upset, would my teachers notice that I was upset? That was one of the strongest ones, at an 85% reduction in the likelihood of a later disciplinary infraction, and the odds of a later disciplinary infraction. So, this is where statisticians like me like to get excited because the rubber starts to hit the road. We get to actually do some of the testing and look at, with a little bit higher degree of confidence, how some of these items are really related to each other, and whether they're a lever that we can try to pull, or whether it's one we should move on from. So, with that, I think my final thought on this slide is, it also reinforces the importance of everything that we do that's not straight academics, right? If we're looking for solutions to some of these issues, they're on the slide, right? I mean, these are things that are actionable for us to try to get our heads around on how we might have an impact on infractions and discipline. So, with that, I believe, if it pleases the chair, it goes to Jackie.
Absolutely.
All right.
And Ms. Peterson, you're going to talk a little bit about not only what the district is doing to reduce behaviors, but also to increase the level of belonging that students feel. Okay.
Chair Marvin, there was a memo included in Word docs, and I didn't have a hard copy of the different spots, but I intended to share a little more about this memo. The data we decided, we've all been familiar with it, totally close of the large names, and certainly what we felt throughout the school year is, the picture is painted here by Peter, the middle schools kept us very busy in the Office of School Support, not just our office, but the schools themselves. There was a feeling this year that there was an uptick in fighting, and we found part way through the year that was not true, it just, it felt that way, but we were dealing a lot with disruption of the educational environment. Significant But we were dealing a lot with disruption of the educational environment, significant disruption. So first I want to say, we didn't just sit back and wait for the year to end and then say, we'll hit reset. We did try some things at all of our sites and district-wide. Kellogg Middle School implemented a CARES program where they, where students who had multiple, you know, repeat behaviors that were disruptive engaged in, kind of an in-school suspension, traditionally what you would think of, but it wasn't sit and be quiet and do your work. It was core instruction by licensed teachers. It was work with students on social skills such as empathy. It was a multi-day experience with the goal of having students go back to the regular environment and not, not have the issue again. And that was very successful. And I will say during our Belonging Behavior Summit at the beginning of June, when that concept was shared among all the schools, there's great interest in collaborating and replicating something similar at other schools. I will say Willow Creek also tried a version of a customized day for students toward the end of the year. And John Adams Middle School had something they called, we called it RASP early on, but like an alternative to suspension that was in-school and utilized our technology and our ability to connect with students virtually. So removing students from the classroom physically, but not from the instruction. So a lot of things were tried at, you were aware that at one of our middle schools, we increased the number of days we suspended students who were continuing to disrupt the learning environment. So there are many things that we tried, and that was really helpful at the summit to be able to talk about what worked and didn't work. And as we look through the plans that were developed at that summit by the middle and, and high schools, some of the common themes I outlined in the memo. Clearly, strengthening relationships between students and staff is number, a number-one priority with our schools. I think we can all, we all can cite research that's, that, that tells us and points to that is the key to being able to connect with students academically. We have to develop, develop those relationships first. And some of our schools called out that we need to develop those kinds of relationships staff-to-staff first before we can, or alongside doing that with students. Our schools are talking about adjusting schedules so that students can feel a sense of time to focus on things other than academics. So looking at our advisory times, our middle and high schools are talking about having things like morning meetings, which traditionally had, have been more of an elementary strategy. We're talking about social skills lessons at the secondary level that we, that can be customized. So it's not a program, a canned curriculum, but something that we know will directly relate to students at that level. We've talked about systems of support for students. We have students who are not, are going to class but not grasping the concept because either they've missed it during distance learning. For whatever reason, they are maybe not ready for the concept. And students are themselves through avenues like the Perspectives Project that was conducted. My colleague Will Ruffin II and his department, students saying, I get into class and a couple minutes in, I'm already lost. And why, why would I stay and try to attend when I don't know what's going on? So we need to address, how do we support kids and scaffold them so they can access the content being delivered? We talked, their plans are full of suggestions of meaningful and regular connections with parents and caregivers because we know that's key. This summer, we have schools that are doing picnics. And Kellogg does popsicles with the principal regularly. So you just show up and have a popsicle, you might want to go in and tour the building, and they'll do that. They were recently, last week, at two different venues out in the community, having a picnic with families. So that's an example of, of those types of activities. There are lots of, of strategies that involve hearing students and elevating their voices and incorporating their, what they're telling us they need into the school day. And then there's the piece about responding to the data. We need to make sure that all of our schools have access to their discipline data and that they're not waiting until the end of the quarter or the end of the school year to look at that, but on a weekly basis so that if they're seeing some trends, they can address them right away and not wait for issues to become bigger issues. We have really good avenues to do this through Swiss at the elementary schools. Eventually, we'll be all moving to EduClima, a different platform. But, and then PBIS Rewards at the secondary, and allows you to look at where, where are our behavior issues happening? What time of day are they happening? And I think we shared previously with the board, it might be as simple as this hallway is too crowded and we need to change the, the exit pattern out of the lunchroom and give students room to move to their next class. And by not crowding, we have fewer issues. And then we also want to make sure that our staff and through PBIS Rewards at the secondary, that our staff are able to communicate when they're having issues with a student that they would like support. It might be that a student is expressing that they are behind or it might be they're expressing their discomfort with a behavior. And so it's a two-way street. So as a principal, I can know what the teacher has already tried, and then the teacher will know what I'm trying to so that we're not duplicating efforts, but we're also making sure that we cover every base. So those are some of the pieces that I look, as you look through the plans, some of the common themes that are coming. Certainly, there are some very unique strategies that, that buildings are planning as well. I also want to call out, we did identify work groups that will, will be, that we're working on this summer. One is around cell phones, I think you'll be glad to hear that. There's plenty of research out there around cell phones and our youth. And if you talk to staff, they'll tell you that it is not an easy, it's not something that's easy to address because we want our students to be able to use their technology and their devices, but we want them to do so appropriately. So we have a group of secondary administrators assembling. Actually, we're meeting tomorrow. Eric Johnson has been curating research around cellphone use and some plans that other schools have found successful. We have some of our buildings that have already kind of tried to develop some plans. And I will say, I, if I could predict, it won't be that you can't bring your cellphone to school, but it will be very specific guidelines around where, where your cellphone can be and when it can be used. And most importantly, what happens if you are struggling with those guidelines? What are the steps we'll take to help you as a student be able to follow those guidelines? So more to come on that when we have fleshed those, those plans out. And then the other work group is actually something that Chris Lingan and I are working on, and that is to relook at how we are supporting schools with discipline. There's kind of this, I think it's a misnomer that you can't suspend anyone without talking to someone in our office. That's kind of floating out there among staff, that administrators' hands are tied and they're not able to suspend unless we say so. And that is really, it's not accurate. But we want to make sure that our administrators are equipped so they know. Obviously, they know that we trust them professionally, but we also want them to continue to work with us because you can't, just when you think you've seen everything, you haven't seen everything. And if we could write a book, we would make millions just on what happens, what's the things that things, that kids think up to do. And so we want to make sure that they are in regular communication with us if there's something that comes up that they haven't dealt with before. But we want to make sure that they have, that their professional judgment is valued, but that they also have a really strong set of guidelines about what they can and can't do in terms of response to behavior. So those are two things we're working on there. Other, other strategies that were identified as top strategies, those will be, some of those are addressed through the strategic plan.
Thank you. And are there questions or comments for either Dr. Rock or Ms. Peterson?
Or, or Chris Lingan.
Or Chris, Mr. Lingan. And from Cabinet, Board members, Dr. Cal, I can't see you. So if you have something to say, just, okay, good. Ms. Marlin.
I have a couple of questions about, I'll try not to get into the weeds because I know.
Thank you. That would be a good thing.
Do students all have school-issued devices at this point in the secondary? Are students still relying on cell phones to get information?
No, they all have a school-issued device.
Okay. So that's not going to be a reason then for students to have a cellphone? That they don't have a device?
They should all have a device. I mean, there's times, having been a middle school principal, there are times that the device is at home and not at school.
Right.
So it could be that on a situat, it could be situational that they don't have a device.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Garcia.
Yeah, mine, mine is more about the students' involvement in this plan. Do you plan to ask students about restrictions around devices in the classroom?
Around the devices? We haven't gotten to that point yet, but I will add that to our agenda tomorrow when we meet. I think it's really important. I mean, I think you could talk to some kids like at Student School Board, just like you can talk to some parents who will support a million percent that we're going to restrict, restrict cell phones, but you won't hear, you, you, you're not going to get everybody's opinion by talking to one group. So I think it needs to be multiple venues. I, I think that a lot of kids will say that they would support restriction of cell phones, but they're, but that's certainly not going to be a unanimous belief among our young people.
I even wonder just around strategy, because I remember like when I was in high school, cell phones, most of them were flip phones at the time, like had just started to become more commonplace. But then when the phones started to become open-faced but had like a, like you could feel the keyboard. We were restricted from having phones in school, like in the classroom, or it had to be like in a backpack or in your, you know, pocket. But then we just figured out that there were ringtones you could purchase that were unhearable to people 40 and older. And that we could text through our pockets if we could figure out the keypad on our phone.
So we should really talk to you.
I'm a, I'm a couple decades removed from all of the cool things to do.
I remember those days too, for the record.
To get around that. So I'm thinking, not just, I'm going to want the kids to narc on themselves, but like to ask them, what is, what would work for them, both in like recognizing the restriction needs to happen and how can they also still have access to a communication device they may need? So if we have students, for example, that have a, like a glucose reader monitor on their phone, like we can't take their phone away from them, right?
Right. I think, I think there are teachers that have really developed strategies that work well. There are teachers that maybe have a, if you picture like, like a shoe holder that you hang on your door at home and you put shoes in the pockets. Or some teachers have calculator caddies like that where it's really critical though that it's clear and see-through, that the student puts their phone there and they can see it there. They know that it's not gone anywhere, no one's messing with it. It's not in a box with a bunch of other devices. That that is really helpful for students to, that's a sense of comfort. Because for a lot of students, if you say, I need your phone, they're not going to give you their, their phone willingly. And it is like taking their, their most personal item from them. And we have had situations this year where that has become a power struggle and it can result in some behavior that it's really unfortunate that it maybe could have been avoided if we just back off and say, all right, I'm going to let this go right now and ask for help from an administrator. Do I really need the cellphone right now? It's that, that response from students is that strong. And so it's really important that we do find out what are, what are kids willing to do. There are some teachers that will have like a charging station. But I think the critical piece is that the, the student knows their cellphone is there and safe. And then they're not worried about it as much.
Ms. Marlin.
And Ms. Peterson, I'm sure that you've touched on this, but I just want to make sure it's part of the conversation that are you also talking at your meetings then about engaging the students so they don't feel a need to? You know, if they're checked out, they go to their phone as a default? That they're engaged in the conversation?
Right, if instruction is engaging, then maybe we're not thinking about a phone. Just like as adults when we're in meetings.
That never happens to me.
We're all guilty of it. It's a, we were all so dependent on our phones. And if, as long as we're engaged, we can, and that phone is not sitting next to us, we, we resist the temptation. But we've all had that, I saw a notification and now I'm, I'm in a multitask and pretty soon you're not attending what's happening in the meeting. That happens to, you just imagine what that, what that's like with the, you know, the brain of a, of a middle schooler.
And I even think about, you know, the parents who worked at home, the modeling that they were seeing at home when the parents were home was probably not the best modeling of that behavior as well.
Exactly.
Two things, one about the cell phones. I'm glad that you're compiling the research that we know about cellphone use in young minds because there's an abundance showing that kids really do get addicted. And that frequent cellphone use lowers their attention span. I mean, I think part of the issue that we're seeing with fights in school, there is barely an altercation anymore that isn't planned ahead of time by students with cell phones. And then it gets taped and broadcast. So every altercation now is sent out to the entire community. And it, I mean, it's just bad practice. Nonetheless, I absolutely understand that students really believe that their cell phones are their lifeline. And it's, they have become sort of important, have gained in importance far beyond what they should. And then I have a question for Dr. Rock. When we're talking about the number of students with infractions or who are sent to the office, do you have the data showing how many students per school? I mean, is it widespread or are there at each building a relatively small group that have continued infractions? What kind of trends are you seeing here?
Sure. So the, the longer document does contain a head count, but not per school. But that's easy to calculate. I didn't look at every school, but the ones that I did look at, Willow Creek is the one that sticks in my head. There were 200 and some students who had an infraction, but only 29 accounted for a majority of the infractions for the whole school.
29 students.
29 out of the 200 and some. So, and that, you're going to find that at just about every site.
That makes a big difference in terms of how each, any building would know that.
Right. And if you talk to teachers and administrators in the building, they're going to know who those 29 students are probably just off the top of their head.
So it's a whole different approach when it's some kids with, with real needs versus the entire student body?
Right, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Nathan.
So I really appreciate the emphasis on reminding everyone that we did not wait till the end of the year to look at this issue and that this discipline, both the infraction and the consequence data, is not news to our administrators, as are the disparities. And I really appreciate that in the plans that were presented to the board throughout the year, there was always a consciousness of the impact of whatever plans we were having might have on disparities. So that has been a focus of this board, obviously, for many years, since the Office of Civil Rights data. And I, I think it's important to reemphasize that even though we are responding to a higher level of behavior disruption, we're still not losing that focus. And I don't know if this is a question for the superintendent, but I'm wondering about how, obviously, the students will experience the impact of these plans because hopefully they'll, they'll see some changes. But how will our staff and our families learn about what changes or what is being implemented in the buildings to address some of the concerns they've had from this year and going into the new, the new school year?
I think there's two pieces. One is we, we are in discussion about how we will roll these plans out to families, to students and families as part of the site continuous improvement plan. So our, our thought is there will be some way to communicate the, the overall plan for the school, but within that plan, these strategies around belonging behavior. So we do want parents and students to know and be part of that. We also have talked a little bit about next board meeting, we'll be bringing the handbook, the student handbook forward for approval and, or for your review. And in the past, we printed those. The handbook is, I don't know, 60 pages long. And there are a lot of hyperlinks in there that would not be very effective on paper. We'd also kill a lot of trees sending it out. So we now, we now share that virtually. But we will be directing each building to share the handbook with the student. But we will be directing each building to share the handbook with the student body. And one way we know is effective that, at the secondary level, to share, to bring grade levels of students together to talk about the highlights of the handbook. And then at the elementary level, by classroom, to talk about the highlights of the handbook in their, in their words, and call out what students need to know. So we don't just expect students to read the handbook, and we also will expect staff to read it as well. Not just the staff handbook, but the student handbook. And then there is a sign-off on Skyward for families, so that we, we can, we know that, our kids tell us, no one reads the handbook. But we do want to make sure that we highlight information with them, so that they're aware.
Mr. Farrelly.
For me to jump in there really briefly?
Sure.
Sorry, sorry, Director Bobbitt. I just want to, to Director Nathan's point, I just want to name the fact, this conversation that is very focused on discipline is super important, and super important to be transparent. But when Director Nathan asked the question, "How do you share these plans?", there's a tension there, because this is not the only thing by a mile that is happening in Rochester Public Schools. We are as focused on academic success, and even as Dr. Ruck points out, the disparate impacts that some of our youth of color, special education students, multi-language learners are experiencing with discipline, there are also kids of color, multi-language learners, students with disabilities who are thriving in our schools, and who are going on to the University of Minnesota, and the University of Chicago, and are doing extraordinary things. And so while we want to be transparent and clear about this issue, safety is foundational for all kids, we want to put it in a broader context. And so as we begin sharing these plans in the fall, we're going to be talking very clearly about these strategies around safety and belonging, but we're going to actually balance it with the academic priorities that are just as important for our schools. And of course, as the Perspectives Project showed, they're linked, when kids are academically engaged and thriving, these behavioral issues shift. And so we are going to be leaning into two-way transparent communication around these issues. And tonight's conversation is not about that other stuff, because we want to be very focused on this issue. But I think with our parents, with our community, and with the students, we need to know this isn't the only lens through which we see any of these kids, even the kids who are in that small group that are getting caught up in the disciplinary process a lot. We care about those kids, and we're working to support them educationally, socially, emotionally as well. So it's not a "either or," and we are going to be sharing those strategies. But we, unlike tonight, are going to try and put these issues of behavior and discipline in a broader context, because that's not the only story, or even the main story, of what's happening in Rochester Public Schools. I apologize, Director Bobbitt, I wanted to just jump in and reinforce that point, though, at this moment. Thanks.
Sure, in part, you did address some of the things I was going to inquire about. I still will, though. So really, we're not necessarily seeing anything that we haven't previously seen. And I appreciate, Dr. Ruck, how you have packaged it. And for me, I'm thinking, and I believe other board members, and probably members of the community, would like to see, so what are you going to do? And Dr. Pikel alluded to, this is just a small part of the actual plan. One of the original iterations of your report included verbiage of this being potentially lensed into the instructional strategies we could potentially begin to utilize for our children, which would then lean into the academic priorities that we'd like each of our students to possess. And so I'm anticipating, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm anticipating that probably as we move into our strategic action plan, this particular report will ultimately, or the plan will, which lens will we look through? Our discipline, our research report, or our strategic action plan to determine our outcomes? I guess I don't want to be reactive. I think for a moment, the, toward the end of this past school year, the increased suspensions for, that were rolled out at one of our middle schools, to me, that was probably reactionary. I don't know, and we probably, or you may be able to say, "Well, yeah, it resulted in, you know, these positive outcomes." I don't know. You know, just months removed from that. But I guess I'm just kind of leaning toward. I'm sure there's a goal beyond just the release of this annual report. And as I previously said early on, I like to see it tied to how it relates to our instructional strategies, our academic priorities, how it may even filter into our MT, our multi-tier school, our MTSS, how those particular items are incorporated into dealing with these behaviors. And so all of that, now moving to this final piece, if I'm not mistaken, often the RPD information is a part of this report, and I noticed it was absent this time around. And so RPD did not have any actions to report, or will that be something separate, or that was not really just part of this initial look?
We can get that information for you. I know, I'm not sure that it was in any of the downloads that Peter would have had access to.
No, I wouldn't have had access to that, anyway.
But Chris would have that data and can put that together.
So just to make sure I'm correct, then, aren't they, don't we normally have both of them presented at the same time, or they're a part of?
We have done that in the past, you're correct.
And so is the intent to now separate them out? I'm not trying to push one or the other, I just want to make sure that we, at some point, are able to hear, sense, know what the RPD is doing in terms of our students.
Dr. Cal.
Intent is simply to separate them out, but you need to see both. Just as we are trying to make sure there is a very clear distinction between the disciplinary process with staff, and where illegal behavior involves, or unsafe behavior involves law enforcement in the day-to-day life of our schools, we're trying to keep them separate in looking at the data. So we do need to get that on the revised annual calendar tied to the strategic plan to look at that with you. I would recommend that we continue to look at them separately, because the mind would blur them. And we work very hard not to have a kid who's being suspended, or having any of the consequences that are in the data you're looking at tonight, have a handoff to law enforcement unless there is very clear threat to safety or illegal behavior. And so that's the logic behind not bringing them to you tonight. But you're right, you need to see that. And it's not on our annual calendar right now, but it does need to be. And so I'll work with the chair and the vice chair to bring that to you.
I would appreciate that, because those two things are blurred together, whether we want them to be or not. So I think even if we're not going to present them at the same time, being able to do that parallel process is necessary for the work we're doing around this.
Could I just offer that, you know, twenty years ago, we were provided with the statement as well when I was on the board. And while many things stay the same, things also change. And I just wanted to point out that regardless if you look at this data together, or you look at it separately, and I don't think Rochester Public Schools should be held harmless, you know, the data's not good, and we want this to change. But we also have to remember that we're part of a society that has not yet changed, and Rochester Public Schools can do its part. Superintendent has noted, the children are only in school fifteen percent of their day. And so until we can get that other percentage of their time addressing these disparities as well, and the housing situation, and just all those pieces, as he mentioned, it's a much larger picture. It saddens me that we have this, but there have been strategies that have changed in those twenty years since we've been looking at this data. And there are things that are done differently, but as a nation, we still have a lot of clutter to clear before we can expect that every student has the opportunities that all students should have.
Other comments or questions, Ms. Nathan and Ms. McLaughlin?
I guess this goes to the timing of future annual calendar items as well, but we have gotten into a pattern because of requirements from the Office of Civil Rights and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, that we looked at this data twice a year. There were times that we looked at it by semester, and then we looked at it at the end of the year. What is the right schedule on which we should look at the data in the context of our plans having an impact and changing what we're seeing in the data patterns?
I think it depends on what the strategy is that you're trying to evaluate. The sort of rule that I have used in the past is quarterly. But again, I think it depends on the strategy that you're trying to evaluate, because there are plenty of strategies that you can't reasonably expect to have an impact within a quarter. It might only be an annual thing. So I think it would be, I think it would depend based on what the objective is.
I'm kind of struggling on how to ask this and who to ask this, but I'll do my best here. One of the things that caught my attention in looking at the PDF, is what I reviewed before the meeting, where on, let's see what, is that page, is there another? Page thirty-three, it lists the various offenses. And I guess the preliminary question I would have, I guess, is that there's a fairly large number for interruption to learning, and a fairly large number for interruption to learning environment. Are those different categories, and how are they different? And how do administrators know the difference?
I can answer that part. So we used to have, we have DERS that we have to report to, the Discipline and Reporting System through the state. And DERS in October changed their wording of things. And so we kept--
October of twenty-one?
Yep, yep. So we kept our wording and had to add DERS in, because we didn't want to confuse our data entry people and those things, because all of our documents had, you know, that in there. So they're combined now, they should, so next school year, there won't be that extensive list. It will be just the one that's in DERS.
Would it be possible for us to get that list and those definitions, so that we can understand this page, and then also get the new list, so we can understand what it is that we'll be looking at in the future? That that would be helpful. And I guess the other related question is, things like, I guess, the thing that keeps crossing my mind is the subjectivity of some of this. You know, what's harassment? What's bullying? How do different admins look at those things, and how are they trained to categorize them? Do you want to take that one, too?
They are very, it's very, it's, that part's very difficult, between harassment and discipline, fighting and physical altercation. All of those are, you know, they're, it's not an easy thing to say, "This is for sure this part of it." Because some buildings look at it this way, some look at it a different way within it. But as a whole, I would, you know, the bullying and the harassment piece may come down to how many times things have gone on.
Would two different admins look at that differently?
Possibly.
Okay. And I guess--
Yeah, I can't say that for sure, that it would be every time, this is the way, that's how I view it, but yeah.
I guess my worry is that without knowing some of that detail, how much of that is playing a role in the disparities?
There's a definition of bullying, is, you know, over time, and it's intentional and unwanted, and where a lot of times we'll hear from a student or a parent, "My student is being bullied," and when it comes down to it, it's a single incident. And then is that bullying, or is it misbehavior? So there are definitions to follow. But I will say, I mean, it really is, we're dealing with people, with little people sometimes. And I can tell you, I was at a building one day this past year, and I'd been working with the building about a student who was tearing apart class, the classroom, like destroying the classroom. So on the phone, I'm hearing this, and I happened to be at the school. When the principal got a radio call, the student was tearing apart the classroom or destroying the classroom, and I want to go see this. So I went on the call with the principal. And my definition of tearing apart a classroom and what I saw that day, very, very different. But it's because of my experiences compared to that principal's experience, and I, it was not the, I didn't, I didn't see what I expected to see. You know, furniture, I did not see furniture turned upside down, and classroom materials everywhere. It didn't meet my definition, but that was because of my background of what I was used to seeing. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm trying to look at this both from a more global level, as well as a, you know, in-the-trenches kind of level. So I think the board is going to be looking at it from a global perspective. You know, once again, to emphasize there is a distinction between management and governance. So at the governance level, I think we need to have this information presented to us a couple times a year, or, you know, whenever it works for you, while understanding that it's not just twice a year that this is happening, that you all are working on it every single day, with students and administrators and parents when they need to be involved. Whereas we're looking at the big picture. So I would be, I think the board would be very remiss to come in and say, "Well, I really think this is how you should be doing it." You know, so unless we have board members who are in the classroom as teachers, I don't know, maybe substitutes, but, you know, we're not there every single day to see whether or not what's working and what's not working. So from a purely, a point of pure interest, you know, I'd be interested in saying, you know, "Here are some of the strategies we tried that didn't work, here are some that did work, here are stra, here's a strategy that maybe worked in this building at this particular time, but that strategy did not work in another building at a particular time." So that those strategies might be effective or not, based on the context of the situation in the building. You know, and that's, and that's, that's at the granular level of what you guys are doing.
Right, and the important piece is the quarterly look, well, the weekly look at the building level is the practitioner piece--
Exactly.
--and addressing the behavior. And I think, and I think too, we've said before, that every discipline situation tells a story, and the administrators and teachers can tell you, it's not just a number on a page. And I think looking at, looking at discipline data weekly, or even quarterly, doesn't, doesn't tell the story sitting in this room. I mean, I can tell you that there are high schools who have said at the end of a quarter, "Well, our discipline data is going to really be skewed because of homecoming, or because of prom, and the party bus, you know, rolled up, and we had nine kids suspended." You know, at that school level, that's where it's really important that we're addressing and looking at trends and responding to support our students.
And I think there's, there's just a lot of data and information that has to be woven together, and I'm really glad that we have such competent people here who can do that for us to get a better feel. Well, like was just shown on the slide earlier, you know, those relationships matter, and they do reduce behaviors. So it's, you know, as was mentioned earlier, it's not just one thing, it's just, it's a whole range of things that have to be woven together like a tapestry, in order for us to see that picture.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Nathan?
I guess to build on Director McLaughlin's question in terms of the definitions, we're going to be looking at the student handbook. Those things are spelled out in the student handbook, and there is going to be training for staff. I think I remember that in the overall plan for the discipline, one of the work groups was to look at all of our discipline responses. And is there, is there regular training that our staff gets on an annual level to say, "These are what the definitions are"?
Administrators or staff?
The people who have to make the decision about how to classify the student behavior.
Yeah, actually, I was looking at a document that you shared earlier, a matrix of, this is the behavior, here's the response. And we actually have something like that, that's been in existence for probably twenty years, and updated, I won't say regularly, but updated, and the point of it is so that we can agree as administrators what the infraction is, and that we can agree that if I'm at Mayo High School and I have this behavior, that the response to my behavior would be about the same as if I was at Century and I had that, that behavior. So not, not saying that every case has a set, like, three-day suspension, but that there's some sort of framework around it, so it's not a wildly different response from one school to the next.
I think that's part of our office's role, by going to the buildings, by having those meetings that we've talked about, and also just the conversations that come when a building principal calls you and say, "I've got a situation here I haven't run across yet, what do you think?" And then, "How are other people coding this? I haven't had-- I haven't had this before. Well, this is what happened at Century and this is what we did at the Amber Valley. It may not be exactly the same, but it's, there's going to be some, some, some of the pieces within that. A part of that's just out of our office.
We also have administrators call and say, I'm thinking of three-day suspension. And it might be, we agree with you or, well, let's talk about that and then we scale it back. But those conversations are important to have because number one, the, the administrative team might be in the heat of the moment and, and thinking maybe it needs to be more and that, or they might not have had something like that before, but we're, we're, we are aware of what's going on across the district and we can, we can help them settle on what's, what's appropriate. And we, we have tried to reduce, we, we don't feel that, you know, three days is, three days of suspension does something magical compared to one or two. You know, the, the goal is, and the Director's, Director Barlow's earlier point about the middle school where we expanded the number of days we suspended, that did have a, an impact on a number of students who just turned it around. It was enough to get their attention and they wanted to be at school. But there were enough kids also that were, it was like, great, five days, I don't have to be at school. And that's the last thing we want to do. So that was a kind of a hail Mary at the end of the year to see if we could get some, get some behavior response from our students in the right direction, but it's certainly not something that we want to continue to do.
Thank you to everybody who's presented and for this discussion. Clearly, it's going to be an important discussion. It's going to continue throughout the school year and throughout the school years. We've got some great resources and we're going to do better. We'll move on to three point oh-two, Office for Equity and Engagement, Structure and Functions. Dr. Kell.
Thank you very much, Dr. Marvin. As board members are aware, before I got to Rochester, the new Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion was created and a highly respected teacher and educator from the school district, Will, Will Ruffin II, became the first leader of that effort. And as I got here a year ago, the nurturing of that work in the district became one of my priorities. And in fact, it's one of my priorities for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year that the board will be evaluating me on in August. And so as we talked about the somewhat slower pace of things in the summer for the board and for staff, we thought this was a good time to pause and do a progress check on how the progress of the office has unfolded over the course of the year, understanding that it's a work in progress. And I'm really glad that Will has asked Willie and Sarah Louise and Heather to join you. And I won't steal any of their thunder in terms of talking about the work of the past year because I know they're going to give you a more granular action-oriented vision of that than I could. I do want to say briefly two things about the future direction tied to the strategic plan because as board members are aware, I have asked Will to assume somewhat broader responsibility and we've renamed the office from Diversity, Equity and Inclusion to Equity and Engagement. And it's a longer discussion, but the, the two pieces that are so critical that we're adding to this expanded office are supporting and preparing our students for success in life after high school, especially in post-secondary education and in the world of careers. And the second is engaging our families. And both of those functions have an all-kids agenda, which is to say, we'll be looking to Will and the office to be preparing all Rochester students, starting for sure in middle school, I think likely in elementary school, for success in post-secondary education, career, to become thriving adults. Similarly, we're going to be looking to the office to help develop a framework for engaging all families authentically. But at the core of our most urgent challenge are supporting those students and those families from historically marginalized communities. And so that's why those two critical parts of our strategic plan are going to be housed with this effort. We're not diminishing the emphasis on equity, but we're broadening the portfolio such that those two critical functions of putting kids on that positive path and engaging families and creating a parent empowerment program are going to have a strong rooting in equity even as they also are leading system change across the district. So that's the work looking forward and I know the, the four colleagues that are there will be talking about that. But they're also going to give me a glimpse of the work that, good work that they've been doing today. So I want to thank Will for his leadership in this work in progress and turn it over here.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kell. I just want to acknowledge like he did, that we do have a couple of members of our team who are with us today. They are going to speak to some of the highlights of the year that they felt stood out to them. But I also wanted to introduce Heather Hogan, who is a new member of our team who will be heading up C-Tech and also our post-secondary focus and our school counselors. So welcome aboard, Heather.
Thank you.
It's okay if you want to do the soft clap, that's all right.
Thank you. When I was thinking about the school year, I took a deep breath because it was a long school year on so many efforts. But I think about prior to last July, this department didn't exist at all. So there was truly none of this that I just passed out was in place, at least not structural. So now that we have a department, we can focus on many of these wins that we're going to talk about, but then also some of the challenges that are not yet in place and also need to be in place. So I think about things like our equity specialists who were hired. Many of us talked about how representation matters, how it matters to see a person like you in the schools. And I think that was a huge win for us. We hired eight equity specialists just about midway of the school year. We also changed one title from a minority liaison to an equity specialist. So we have a total of thirteen total. That's huge. And I think it's a huge win for our district. One area that I think we can improve upon is all of our equity specialists look like me. I am not representative of all of the students in Rochester Public Schools. So as we continue to get a handle on this, I think we should continue to expand what the equity specialists look like. If we're going to tap into the various communities of our schools of our, of Rochester, then we also have to diversify the people who are working in our schools. So although it was a win this school year, that's one area that I think that we can improve on for sure going forward, right? And I also think that it's going to come with time because I do feel there's a population of people who want to see us do the work first before they take that leap of faith and want to join the fight. So just on that front alone, this department has been huge because I do feel people are watching us and they're listening to what we do. Are our actions actually matching the words that we say we're going to do? When I look at this list that I provided, I feel our actions are matching up. So just thinking about how American Indian education started to collaborate better with our AIPAC group, that was one relationship that was needing some repairing. So that's another win that I think we have to note. Just by having our liaison in place is a good thing, but that liaison position has also been a revolving door. We've had many people in that same position throughout the year. So what do we need to do to get this solidified? We have to listen to the people who are on the ground. We have to listen to that AIPAC group. What are your needs? And then the school district's job is to figure out how we're going to support that person in that position and that AIPAC. So just starting to mend that relationship is a step in the right direction. And part of mending that relationship, we were able to send a small team to the National and State Education Conference. This was something that AIPAC group wanted to see. They wanted to see more people getting informed on the experience of Native Americans. So we tried to honor that. We brought back the feathering ceremony and the powwow, which we weren't able to do. And I'm, I'm actually honored to say that I'm glad that I saw many of you there participating because people also look at things like that too. It's a one thing to sit in the office and say we're going to do things, but it's a totally other thing to actually be in the community, being at the events, talking to people, shaking their hands, letting them ask you questions, being vulnerable in that space with them. This is what we have to do. Okay? So what I'm going to do now is stop because I'm going to monitor the time that I'm taking up and I'm going to invite Willie and Sarah Louise into the space because I want you to highlight some of the wins that you thought occurred throughout the school year. And then we will pass it over to Heather and then Heather's going to introduce herself and her vision for the role for the school year. After that, we'll open up for questions if that's okay for her. Okay? Me too.
All right. Hello, everyone. Beautiful night. It was kind of, it's chilly in here, but it's really warm outside. I'll take that any day. I think it's, it's really been a, it's been a really great year for us, especially for me, you know, just being, having the opportunity to start out the school year in my role and then have an opportunity to supervise five equity specialists. And then by mid-year, pretty much in January, have an opportunity to add eight more to the team during the school year, which was something that in the beginning, you'll sit back and think, wow, that's a lot to bring on at one time. But, you know, having, having a team that we have and having the young men and women that we actually hired on was great. It was great for us and it was great for, for the district as a whole. I think as we continue to move forward during the school year, we all had learning curves, lots of learn, adjustments. But yet I think the most important component to the people that we hired is they're, they're student-driven. And, you know, and when you're student-driven, you have a passion and you want to really make a difference. And at times, sometimes when you, when you have those type of passions and, and you come from a different perspective, the challenge with that comes sometimes when the communication between all parties to understand how we're going to make this work, how can we align this in order to make sure that not only the students, but the families as well have that success. And I think we did a pretty good job at that. And we learned a whole lot and we know exactly what needs to be done in regards to going into the upcoming school year. But some highlights, one thing was the collaboration between equity specialists and the, and the school resource officers. I think that was, that was really huge, especially because of the fact that we had went through so much over the last couple of years for them, for the, for the SROs and the Police Department to want to do this collaboration and work alongside of us, to be able to help students, to be able to get students a different perspective, to give them an opportunity to share and build relationships with students. But yet the most important piece was for students to be able to see the collaborative work between both parties so that as time moved on and as we continue to build on these relationships, it's not just important for them to have those relationships within the buildings, but when they're outside in the community. Like you said, we only have them for fifteen percent of the day and the rest of the day they're out within the community. So we want for them to have those relationships. And the only way that that can happen is for us to sit down and have those type of conversations, giving them the platform to share their lives with students so they can see a different side of them. And I think that went a long way, not only with the SROs, but them building relationships with students, but for the equity specialists as well, because they were able to see law enforcement from a different perspective and building those relationships. And I hope that as we continue to move forward, we can continue to do that. And another, a couple of other highlights, I'm not going to take up all day, but we had our first annual Male Muslim Student Association of Five Celebration, which was huge. All of the students were great. They did a great presentation. I know a lot of you guys were there. The food was excellent, great opportunity to learn a lot about our Muslim population, great way to build relationships. Development of the LG BTQ Support Group at Lincoln, that was huge. You know, those students, they needed a platform, they needed an opportunity to have a space. We provided that for them and they continued to build on that. You know, family engagement events at Meadow Park in Oak Terrace, you know, just being able to get out in the community once again and for those families to be able to see us in a different light, but yet taking resources, rather than always asking them to come to the buildings, we were able to get out in the community and bring those resources to them, rather than employment, you know, food supports, you know, community services, help, you know, whomever, we tried to make sure that everyone was there and visible and in a hurry of support and giving families an opportunity to build on those relationships as well. So, and we hope to continue to do that as well. I just think that having these, these type of opportunities with, with our equity specialists along with the rest of our staff and as they continue to grow, you know, they, they have aspirations of, you know, rather be continuing education, to continue to grow in the field of education, you know, they have opportunities to continue to build relationships throughout the community. But I think the most important piece is building relationships with our, with our administration and staff within the buildings, being able to give them a perspective that sometimes we may not have, you know, based off our experiences. I know that Mr. Ruffin spoke to, you know, most of our equity specialists look like us with the exception of a couple and that we do need to be more diverse. But for now, with the ones that we actually have, you know, we're going to continue to grow it and branch it out and make sure that we're doing the best that we can to make sure that we're being supportive of all students, not just students of color, but all students. Because the bottom line is, in order for this to work, we have to make sure we, we are bringing that bridge of understanding for all, you know, for all students to feel wanted and that valued, but yet at the same time having success throughout the school year.
So I think that one big thing that I've been saying is that our community is really in a season of rebuilding trust with our district. And I think that, that really lives itself to how this year has been. We have seen many needs in our community with our students and our families. And this was a year where we really tried stuff out, see what was going to work. We heard certain issues that arose and we're like, hey, let's try out this solution. Some things worked, some things didn't. Some things will continue to grow in the years to come. So that's been really exciting. As far as that trust building, I think the increased visibility that has happened in our community is huge. I think we have been able to connect with parents and with families and also other community members. And that piece has really allowed us to not just address certain issues, but also include them and, well, what do you think are some things that we can improve on? What are some strategies that you see for the district? And so that has been definitely an asset to, an asset that has come from our department. I think renaming the department made a lot of sense because that engagement piece, what we have done is broader than what our name kind of civilized before. And so some of the other things that I have noted along with my colleagues is supporting the curriculum and instruction piece and looking at those, when we are looking at changing texts and supporting the difficulties that sometimes come with that change piece. Having our department gave an opportunity for parents and staff to voice concerns and have a place to discuss what the reasoning behind some of those changes are and really get a sense of what our district stands for. So when there were concerns around the text, we were able to respond to that. And also in that there was the development of the Educators Accountability Group, which also helps to, it's a Supporting Employee Resource Group for White Educators. And we tapped into that group as well as the Employees of Color Resource Group with scenarios and solutions that helped us support our community as we go through some of these changes. So the development of having those- So the development of having those groups was definitely a benefit. As well as that, we also provided affinity spaces. We know that with our client, community and society, things have happened and to be able to offer a safe space where people can come and talk even virtually, well, that's kind of how we did it, was virtually, we'd provide a couple hours for people to just come and just feel seen and heard so that you're not just coming into the district like, okay, well, we want you to come do your job. No, it shows that there are people who care about employees and that part is also helpful with retention. Another piece that comes from the importance of retaining those staff of color in particular was with the mentorship component. So there's also some one-on-one mentorship that took place that was stemmed from our department. Another exciting piece was the professional development opportunities. So as we were able to go and gain all of this information, there are different sites that reached out to have professional development opportunities individually and also we went to Hawthorne was another place that we went and really just gave us the opportunity to share all of the things that we learned and in that, one thing that's always exciting to me is that we find people who also have skills throughout our district who know just pieces that we can tap into. So you're able to see all of the talent and the abundance of people that are willing to help and stand with us on our goals. We were able to also look at, as you're aware, the Perspectives Project and implementing that. I did want to point that out because a bulk of that was done by people in our department and so it didn't take time for people who were doing, who were already very heavy on their workload and we were able to provide sort of that service to our district as well. And also IDI debriefs. So with the Equity Teacher Leaders, each site has different goals that they want to work on and a way for sites to kind of get a baseline of where their staff are at is using the IDI. And in doing that, we didn't have to outsource to do the debriefs of that. I was able to meet with sites and individuals and go through that with them and it was just nice to have a way to use that tool. And so I'm very excited. I may be biased, but I think our department is doing some fantastic things with the support of the board and also increased support from the community.
Thank you. And just before we go to Ms. Hogan, could you, for those who may not know, just explain briefly what IDI is?
Yes, thank you. That's the Intercultural Development inventory and what it does is it is an assessment that asks you questions that are gauging where you are on your experiences with different cultures. And so it takes into account by the questions, the history of your experience with people of other cultures and also the ability to interact and adapt to working with people of other cultures. So it gives you a kind of a baseline of where you're at and then also it gives you, when we do debriefs, it gives you the opportunity to learn growth opportunities of how to get to the next point in your growth.
So I'm Heather Hogan and I told Will that I might not have a fully formulated vision after two and a half weeks, but maybe some hopes that I'm, I'm hoping that can come about with this position as our department works together to develop the vision, vision for where we want to go with this. So right now I feel a little bit like I'm pulling on the strings and the skein of yarn and as you pull more out, you get tangles and so I'm working on untangling some of those things with everything that I'm learning about and bringing together. Some of the hopes that I have is that we develop a vehicle for our students and families working with the students to better understand themselves and how they fit in the world around them as they're preparing for life at Rochester Public Schools, that they are able to identify their strengths and their passions and how they can use those to be a successful member of the community that they choose to be a part of, whether it's here with us in Rochester or somewhere else and that they feel like they have options and that they are not limited when they move beyond RPS and that they feel like they have the skills for those options or know how to tap into resources to develop the skills that they need to be that person that they see themselves being in the future. And all of this with our day-to-day looking at what are we offering our students to be able to develop those skills and expanding those pathways for students, whether it's through the CTEC program or I will be housed or through our other schools and building and expanding on the partnerships that we have with our community partners, whether that's with our RCTC partnership, our IDM partnerships with the Mayo Clinic and really strengthening those because I think that from what I've learned so far is that there's a lot of willingness to partner with us. We just need to harness that and have a clear path and direction for that. And working to significantly increase that representation of students who have been traditionally underrepresented in those dual credit earning courses and the pathways that we have so that we make sure that students are not being limited by not seeing themselves in areas that they may be curious about or wanting to explore. Those are the things that are rolling around in my head as I am beginning this work.
Thank you. And questions or comments for any of these folks?
I need to make a comment. I am so enthusiastic and in love with the fact that you all exist. I think that this is something that our district has needed for a very long time and I think to Mr. Ruffin II's point about how far we've come and just the year is so impressive and I think Amy Ike and I were at the Lincoln's first GSA meeting and even though we were sort of like, oh, the admin that's there at the meeting, I think it, it had such a huge trickle-down effect because I feel like the kids don't know who we are, but the staff understood who we are and the staff being excited that they feel supported at this level and then the students seeing the number of educators that were in the room was just beyond me and there were like probably 30-plus kids in that room. And so I think just knowing that that was clearly something that was needed, educators were able to mobilize to make that happen for their students and they were given the support that they needed to do that and they're continuing to feel the support is, to me, like the tangible evidence of the importance of why this office exists. And so I appreciate, that's just one example obviously, and I just appreciate the fact that, that it's here because I think going all the way back to what we learned in the beginning is that, you know, 85% or I can't remember exactly what Mr. Ruff explained, but it was, we, we would reduce the amount of infractions for students the more they feel a sense of belonging with the school and I think that you're, you are far and away kind of the mobilizing force for that and so I really appreciate that you're here and I recognize that there are other people who do not believe that that matters in a district and that we should stick to academics. I do not believe that and I feel like the data shows that that's not the case and you all are doing that work. I really appreciate everything that you've done and this is a wonderful list and I look forward to participating in many more of those activities to support our students, families, the rest of you. Thank you for your attendance.
And I'd just like to echo similarly as Dr., that's Dr. Director did.
It's because I have my mask on, right?
Oh.
Garcia.
Garcia, yeah. And I think it's so important because I had the opportunity to attend this past week our opening round of a, a school board candidate forums and there seemingly is a great deal of misunderstanding as to the equity, what we're doing as a district. And, and, and this presentation tonight and the creation of a department that includes both equity and engagement is so important because it allows the community and, and those who choose to be aware that this is so much more, it isn't just a single talking point issue, but it is something that is so meaningful and significant and I realize that we really haven't, and maybe Mr. Will Ruffin II will share other aspects of the department, but you know, to include bilingual and family engagement and AIE, that is so important and it isn't just a single thing and I appreciate the fact that you're right, just a, a year ago and it was just a, the, the board, I commend the board for sensing the need, not necessarily understanding in totality what that would look like, I'm not sure we had this in mind, it exceeds, I believe, of what our expectation was. I commend Dr. Pikel and, and you, Mr. Ruffin. I think had you not been who you are, perhaps this may not have been developed into what it is, but you and your staff, you by you being who you are have set the bar high so it can only go higher. We're not going to accept lower, but higher for sure and we're looking forward to another great report. I don't know, I don't know how often you will bring a report such as this to the board, but we're, I think, always interested and want to be fully supportive of, of these efforts. So thank you.
Well, Director Barlow stole some of my thoughts, but I'm going to reiterate it, but I remember the budget meeting in 2020 when the board, and I remember the look on Mr. Carlson's face, when we first brought up the idea of a cabinet-level person in charge of equity, because we were talking about all the things that the district was doing that was driven by the findings from the OCR report and MDHR and discipline data, that we really felt it needed a focus. I don't think, as Director Barlow said, at that time we ever imagined that we would be here. I do know that if I had known that Mr. Ruffin would have been the director, I would have not insisted on it far sooner because your leadership has really, even before you were in this position, your voice in this district, to honestly share the perspective of both staff and students and their needs in this area. It opened my eyes, it educated me in a way that I, I did not know before, it inspired me, so thank you. And the people that we have added to the department, seeing all of you in action in, especially in your engagement with families, family engagement has been a passion of mine for many years, so to see it embedded in this department and already reaching some of those more marginalized families, that's where we started. We started with reaching out to those families and our family engagement and I think the family engagement work that will come out of this department will only benefit from that. All families will be served by the lessons that we learned by working with, with the families we've been working with. And I appreciate the ongoing commitment to embedding this work at the top level of our district work. Not that it's just a department and people, but it's in our strategic plan, it's, it's not just a piece of our strategic plan, it's interwoven in multiple areas of the strategic initiatives or the circles or whatever we end up describing it as Superintendent Pikel. And it is a commitment that, as Director Barlow said, is not going to go away because the, the board, speaking for myself, I'm committed to continuing it and we have the people who have the passion that are going to keep it going, so thank you. And I do look forward to many more reports like this.
I think, yeah, some of what bothered me largely, so I think during some of my work as part of the school board piece on equity policy we began with, which kept going back and forth and back and forth to the people who really couldn't inform us as to what that needed to look like, the idea was there that this needs to be at the top of our work. And so Will Ruffin II was hired to do it all by himself initially, you know, we, we didn't, the board, we didn't say, okay, you're going to have, this is you plus where's the funding for all the other people and all the work that has to be done and everything else, but you took it and you ran with it and it's not just you, of course, we have a whole team. This has just exceeded what I could have ever possibly imagined. So I'm glad it wasn't left to me to figure it out because we probably, I know we would be spinning our wheels and it probably wouldn't be going much of anywhere, but the board had the, this idea and worked with people in order to make it come to fruition. And I look at this and I think, my gosh, in a year, this is incredible. No pressure, but I can't wait until we see what we have a year from now. It's, it's just, it's just been amazing and equity work is just, it's so important for all of our students and especially the ones who have been marginalized or left behind or ignored or, you know, whatever their circumstances are and I'm thrilled, so thank you.
Sorry, I just want to make a follow-up comment because a couple of my colleagues had added that, you know, this is, this has become something beyond our wildest dreams and I want to add my voice to that too, but with a caveat that it's not, when we hired you, I expected that you would just, you would do all the things, right? You would build this team and I, it was not, let me think of how I want to phrase this. I was not doubting your ability to make all of this happen or to be the catalyst for that change. I will be honest in that I doubted our district's readiness to allow this to happen and so I want to send some appreciation to my colleagues on the board for continuing to support this or doing something like our equity policy and the statements that we've put out because it is important and I think that if we do that sort of, you know, management governance balance and we say, here is your support, we will get out of the way, but we will offer you the things, the tools and the resources that you need to make it happen, I hope that that continues for the entirety of Rochester Public Schools in this distance.
And if you have any, any last, I was saying the last words. To close this section of the discussion, we certainly have that, however, I think it's so important that it's been, I don't know, our strategic plan is called Planning for Purpose and it seems to me that that's what equity is about, to ensure that every single child know, knows they're important, they have a purpose, that we accept them and we respect them, whoever they are, whatever their memberships, that there is a place for them here and we will do what we can to support that child. And I won't live long enough, but it would be wonderful if we got to the point someday where we don't need a focus on equity because it's just who we are, it's just the culture that we share. So, Will.
You know, I think I will add, I want to echo what you said because I was hesitant to apply for the same reasons that you did. I wasn't sure if the school district was ready to do what needed to be done also and also support the work. My son is the one who has something to apply. My son Trey, damn. I just said daddy, you just have to let them know you, know what everyone else says.
Daddy, you just have to let them know you.
Those words will last forever.
Those words will live forever.
You just have to let them know.
Can't you need to mute?
Basically, you know, he just said, be you and the rest will follow. And that's all I've been trying to, is just do me. But none of this happens by itself, right by myself. We have a team, the team is expanding. But the second thing I wanted to note is, I got here from a place of pain, from not having an ideal experience in this school district. And that is what I want to cease for everyone else. Because when students talk, I believe them because I can say it happened to me too. When other staff members approach me, I can say, yep, we got to change that because that's happened to me too. So out of this pain comes something beautiful. And that's the hope that I want to be a part of. That's the dream for this position, for the district. That's what I want to repair for everyone who's been harmed by the district. We're going to be the symbol that we can learn from our mistakes and we will be better. That's our commitment to anyone listening, student, staff, caregiver, whoever. Our commitment is to be better. And I'll end there.
Thank you. Thanks to all. We'll move on to 6.03, Possible 2022-23 Planning Days Calendar Adjustment. Slightly different issue, actually, the couch.
Am I coming across there?
You are, you are, yeah.
Sorry, I was, I was so interested in what Will was saying. I was trying to get over to YouTube to hear him. So I, I got the vibe, if not all the language. I should also mention, non sequitur, I should have said it at the beginning of the meeting, I was looking for the board members who have not yet met our new Chief Academic Officer, Dr. F. Agbamu to introduce you tonight. F. A.'s a very dignified person, so I won't go to a lot of details, but she fractured a leg over the weekend and is going to be figuring out exactly how to make that work. So we're thinking of her. I know she's watching on YouTube right now, but I wanted, otherwise, this would have been her first study session, and I know she was looking forward to that. But it's a marathon, not a sprint, and she'll, she was with us virtually today. And so we're thinking of her as she's balancing that challenging circumstance. This is an item, and I don't imagine it will take a lot of time, though, of course, that's at the, up to you as board members. We've had a number of questions about renewing the planning wellbeing days that we convened in the 2021 school year in the 2022-23 school year. Of course, were we to do that, it would require board action because as a board, you've already approved the calendar, as you had for last year, for the current school year. Last year, on an emergency basis, given the severity of the COVID-19 pandemic and the academic challenges, social challenges, emotional and mental health challenges that our students were facing, as you all know, on an emergency basis, we decided to have four days where students did not report to class, to give our teachers time to reinvent curriculum, to identify interventions for students who are struggling, and yes, to take a pause, to find an opportunity to get their feet about them in the midst of a really challenging school year. The feedback that we received from staff was, I have to say, overwhelmingly positive and appreciative of those days. That said, we also knew, and board members certainly knew this going into the decision, and then we heard from others over the course of the year, it created a hardship for some parents who depend upon our schools for childcare, for young children in particular. And it also did modestly reduce learning time over the course of that year. Those were four days that otherwise would have gone toward instruction. So I think it was a very good decision in the last school year. And one of the questions I've gotten is what about the school year coming forward? At this time, after a lot of thought, I am not recommending that you take emergency action to revise the already approved calendar for 2022-2023, but I believe we should be vigilant and carefully watch the need to do that. We, as you know, are continually monitoring the impact of COVID, not just on the spread of the virus within our schools, but on staff shortages, which was why we had to go to distance learning for two weeks last year. We will continue to do that. And I think I would recommend the board continue to retain the right to add days like that in the coming school year, should we find ourselves at a point where that proves necessary. While my own circumstance, sitting here in isolation from COVID, illustrates that we are not out of the pandemic yet, I don't think we are at a point now where we know that the level of stress and the impact of the pandemic on our schools merits reducing scheduled instructional time at this point. And so we will watch it very carefully. And a commitment that I would make to try and rectify something that did occur last year was, if it does appear that that is a strategy that we want to utilize again, we would strongly endeavor to give families at least two months' notice so that they could make adjustments and that we could do whatever we could do to increase spaces that are available in our school-aged childcare, which we were able to do with Amy Icke's really great leadership on very short notice last year when we went to distance learning. Also, if we did renew these days in the 22-23 school year, once again, we would definitely put them in the middle of the week. So it's very clear, this is not a long weekend, even though I have no problems with long weekends when they, when they fall on days that are previously scheduled. And we also would put them at a period where there is a long stretch of at least three and potentially four, or one with six weeks, where there would otherwise be no break. So that these are really strategically placed days. So my recommendation, and there is no vote that's being requested because there's no board action that would be required since I'm not recommending a change in your approved plan, would be not to do that for the 2022-23 school year, but to remain vigilant about it. However, I think that as we begin our, or continue our work with Rochester Education Association to design the school calendar for the 23-24 school year, which we will be doing in the coming weeks and months, that we consider replicating this strategy of strategically placing non-student contact days in the midst of those long stretches and the middle of the weeks when staff collaboration and planning time can be very valuable. However, I would, I would recommend, and we'll be talking with our colleagues at REA, if we do that, we don't do that at the expense of instructional time, that we have the additional instructional days for our students, because those are precious days for learning. So kind of to sum up, '21, '22, I think it was a home run. It was, it was a difficult decision that the recommendation I made and that the board approved to do it. I think it was a very successful in the last school year. I don't recommend at this time that we take that step, but that we monitor very carefully the spread of the virus and the level of challenge our staff are facing, and that we have that as a tool in our toolkit in the school year ahead if we decide we need it. And that we work with REA and ultimately bring you a proposal at the board for the 23-24 school year and perhaps beyond that replicates that strategy, but not on an emergency basis, but one that builds into the school calendar. So an update for you, everything I just said is summarized in writing in a couple of slides that are available on the website. And I'd be glad to either engage in dialogue now, but as mentioned previously, this isn't an item on which we will anticipate asking for action in the near term, but wanted to let you and certainly many in the community who have been wondering about this know what my recommendation would be at this time.
Thank you. Board members, any quick comments or feedback? Here are none. And unless there are other comments about anything, we will move to 6.01, item number 6.01. It is 6:57, and we are adjourned.